Good evening. It is Monday, August 28th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session.
The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities' update on actions. Do you want to start us out, Karina?
Sure. A lot has transpired since the last meeting. A flyer was prepared with Marnie's assistance, and you have it before you there, and there are several questions on that flyer. And what you have is a portrait and a landscape version of it. So it looks really nice, but we got feedback from Lily Link from CHAPA, and Mimi as well, indicating that a couple of those questions are probably not the best questions to draw our information out of the public. So if you look, there are questions like, you know, about taxes and home value, and, you know, what if you don't want this in Southborough? So we really wanted to just replace those last three questions with something more positive, like, "Come join us to give your input. Where do you think this district would be best in Southborough?", something like that. So if you have any additional comments on that.
So my only comment is, I feel like sometimes you need to light a fire to get people. And although the consultant suggested more positivity, I kind of like those content questions. She said they would be addressed if they came up, and there was some response. But part of me feels like we need to get people there. And I think if it's overly, like,
Soft.
dull or soft, like, people aren't going to come. So my recommendation is to leave it as it is, but I'll defer to the Planning Board. And I also put it up, and I know we have copies too.
My only comment is I don't like asking questions I don't have the answer to. Do we have answers to those questions? They seem to be, like, I don't know how you would answer those questions, because it's just a district. It's not, we're just doing zoning.
My understanding is they have, like, nebulous answers, because you can't actually answer that until it gets done. So it is just a zoning overlay. So there's kind of a standard approach to suggest that this is an overlay until somebody actually goes, moves into the property and applies for it, then that that's when it would actually have, potentially have an impact or not. But it's kind of a to-be-determined. So there are nebulous answers to nebulous questions. So, you know, again, like, I defer to you and the Planning Board to say, if you want to tone them down a little bit or take some out, because it's very challenging to answer, "Will this affect my taxes?" Because the answer is, "We don't know."
So all of you saw that the recommendations from CHAPA on the questions and how she explained that feedback and why she thought it would be better to not go down that path. But, you know, Marnie's right. In a sense, you also want to ask the tough questions, too. And not every town is like Southborough, and the Board knows the people in the town better than CHAPA or than I do. So, you know, if you feel that that's, those are the kinds of questions that would trigger response and input and interest, we should leave some of them, maybe. And, you know, maybe what if, maybe the last one, "What if the residents don't want this zoning in Southborough?" I suppose that has a clear-cut answer, because if they don't want it, then there's already been public information on ramifications of potential lawsuits and things like that. So, I don't know. I defer to the Board.
I think it looks great. I just, I have one comment. I mean, if we had to get rid of a question, I like, "What will this do to my home value? And what will this affect my taxes?", because I think that will get people out. "What if the residents don't want this?" That might be the question that I would get rid of, because that's a really hard one. You know, like, ugh. The only other question I thought of is, like, "What is this going to look like?" I mean, when we first started this, I have this, you know, slide that Colleen put up. You know, it showed, like, high-density housing, you know? And I've been kind of struck by some of the comments that have come up during other conversations, mostly around 40B, but, you know, and some of the neighbors saying, you know, "It's just that it's like, like, a big box." You know, "If only it looked more like, like, those nice places over there." Or, you know, "Look, you know, like, houses, duplexes, but not so tall." So thinking about, like, design guidelines, you know, will we be able to influence design guidelines? Will public be able to have input on what it looks like? That's the only thing I thought is, like, I think that there's going to be people that are going to be open to it, but want to know, like, "What's it going to look like?" So that's kind of the only element that I might try to add.
Yeah, thank you. So I also think there needs to be something on this to bring people out. I think that's, excuse me, truly our biggest challenge still at this point. I've talked to people that have no idea what it is. So I don't know what that shock value, if I may, is that will bring people out. But I think some of these questions, once people do find out, are going to be, you know, "What will this do to my home value?" I think that that is a question that's going to come up at the, at the forums that we're having. I would assume we need to get this done sooner rather than later, seeing as the first forum is September 21st, and people are finally home now. So I guess my suggestion or question would be, and I know, Marnie, you've been working closely with Karina and Colleen on this, is, do you have a plan to put something out on social media in advance of these cards going out? Or kind of, what is the thought process as we move forward on that?
Yeah, so, good question. So I don't know what our social media town, social media is, and I know Planning Board doesn't have, like, a Twitter account or anything like that. So I would have to defer to Colleen and find out what we can leverage inside. I know I personally will use my personal Facebook account, or I'll put it on some of the group pages to let people know about the forum, and I'll take responsibility to post that. But then, aside from that, I think if we can figure out if there is any other town.
There are. I know Vanessa Hale has things that she puts out, and I can't remember if it's Facebook or Twitter, but we can go to mysouthborough.com and have Beth Mello, ask her if she'll put an article out on that.
Can I have another suggestion, too? We might want to utilize the electronic backpacks through the schools. See if we have enough time to do that. I think that's going to be probably the biggest way to reach families, that and/or if recreation would be willing to put something up on their page and whatnot as well. Thank you.
And also, there's a link on the Planning Board webpage that Colleen put together. And we can ask Ryan Donovan, too, because he just put out a survey, and he got that out there various ways. So we'll follow up on that with Vanessa Hale. And, let me see here. Hang on a second. Let's see.
And again, my only concern is, is there are a lot of people that have no idea what this is. And then to get a postcard in the mail with some type of shock value is, I don't know if that's the attention we're looking to give towards this. So anything we can do in advance of that, I think, would be helpful. Thank you.
Right, and there's also a letter that I passed out, a draft letter that's going to go out, as we discussed at the last meeting. This will go out to south of Route 9, which is near the train station, to those residents in that area.
And town meeting attendees.
And town meeting attendees, yeah. And we already have, Colleen said she had the labels prepared for those already. She worked on that last week. So that's another thing, to just give this a quick look for the letter, so we can send it out as well.
That's a postcard. And the postcard's going to the same,
As the letter.
As a letter.
So I have some changes to propose for the questions. I think we can take out those three and put in, "What is the process? How will this impact our town? And what is under our control as residents?" And maybe make those three questions, the first, the top three, and then move, "What does this mean to you?", down to the fourth. And where should this by right multifamily zoning be located, down to the fifth bullet? My thinking there is, I see the point of Lily, that it's not necessarily, Mimi, you are, you're correct, I think you're correct. We don't know. We certainly don't know how a zoning change is going to affect values on properties. And I don't think the consultant, the state, can answer that question. And they don't know, I mean, there is no impact to property taxes by a zoning change.
What was your third question? You had, "What is..."
"What is under our control as residents?"
What?
So I think it is, I think it's good that we have these questions, you know, to the attention of the CHAPA representatives, but I do concede that maybe it's not the best idea to put them on the postcard.
So you said, "What is the process? How does this impact our town? What is under our control as residents?" Those were your three questions.
And I have all those, and I can update them with the graphics. So you'll have something probably tonight.
And again, this postcard, I'll have to look back into the meeting notes. This is to go to the town meeting voters list and the residents that are abutting or within the half a mile. I think that was what we determined.
Yeah, this was a specific letter. We wanted to craft those right within the half-mile. And then the postcard, now I have to go back to the notes that I went with Colleen, but I thought either the postcard was going to go to all-town, and then the letters were specific to town meeting residents, a town meeting attendees, and the half-mile. But I'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, that sounds better. I think something should go to everybody.
Yep.
So the postcard to all-town, you thought? And then the letter went to the, within the half-mile radius, and those are budding that?
And, yes, and the town meeting attendees.
Voters, yeah.
Sorry? Sorry. I'm just looking at this for the first time. Is there anything that indicates to the recipient that they're in potentially the district? Or near the district?
No, because we were planning to send it to those people within the half-mile radius, as well as town meeting attendees.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
So is everyone okay with Jessie's? Okay. Anybody else on the Board? Anyone in the audience? Mr. Lit?
Couple of, couple of things to think about.
Could you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Woodland Road. One is, in terms of communication, you might want to touch the Senior Center Newsletter, because that's another whole population that isn't so electronically connected. And then in terms of your free question, or however you substitute, I sort of summarized them as, "Should I worry?" And then the other thing that you might consider is, you know, "How has this played out in other towns?" Because I think those might be a different way of engaging people, rather than trying to, you know, guess what the issues are where you don't have a clear answer.
I think there's only one other town that's, that's past this zoning thus far.
Marguerite? Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot. As far as doing it within a half a mile of the station, I think there may be an overlay district, which would apply to areas far beyond that half-mile. So you might want to reach wider than just a half a mile.
Well, so, so the half, the half-mile, the 10 acres has to be there.
Right.
So, and then the other 40 can be somewhere else in town. So we're going to make sure we reach those people, and all-town meeting voters, and all residents. So we should hit somebody, everyone, once at least.
Everybody should know everything, basically.
Yes.
Good.
Eric Glazer, 9 Skylar Drive. The themes on the page, and by the way, I'll admit I'm getting up to speed on this as a resident, so I don't know a whole lot about it. So please, if you give me a little bit of leeway. But it's interesting, the themes that you present are exactly the same ones that will come up later as we think about the 40B, right, the same things that we've been talking about now for months. My question is, within the context of this multifamily zoning, is there a broader consideration on the overall impact to the affordable housing question? Because we're bringing up these developments that are highly concentrated in a very small area, versus taking a step back to say, "What is a broader strategy that could be applied to meet the town's needs?" And so I'm just asking the question, is that within your thinking at this point? Or are you really just yourselves learning and understanding the impact, or just the basic technicalities of it?
Yeah, I'm actually the Planning Board representative on the Affordable Housing Committee. So there is a committee, and we do look at the broad picture. And...
So this potentially has the ability to have a positive impact on that, on being affordable housing?
Yes, very much so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Isn't the, the actual language is, "10% can be affordable, and up to 20% can be negotiated with the town of whatever is being proposed in the MBTA?"
Anyone else? And that's negotiable with the town? So right now, they're, the, formerly the DHCD, now the EOHLC, I think something like that, is saying that 10% is the, is the, is the restricted amount. To go, you can't go over 10%. Not, you have to have at least 10%. It's, you can't go over 10%. And then the town can negotiate up to another threshold, depending on the interest and the need and all that. Okay.
Can I ask one further question, Mimi? So what is the timeframe? And I know, obviously, the postcards would have to be printed, once they're ready. And I think the letters are a little bit easier, you know, to print those and get those out. But what is the timeframe we're looking at in actually getting these out into the public?
Oh, let's see. The first meeting is September 21st. I'm just, and the second meeting is September 27th. So we do have a printer lined up. And my guess is they can do that pretty quickly. Yeah.
We did put a timeline together. I think we're just, we're just between people's schedules to get that mid-August mailing. So we're running late. So I think the printer's ready to go, but I think as soon as we authorize the okay on whatever the language is, they'll be printed to send.
So is there a possibility in at least getting the language ready to go tonight?
Yes, I'm going to email it to my person, and they're going to update the graphics to go to the printer.
Right, and Colleen will be back in the office on Wednesday. So she has where the labels are and such to get that going. She also has the quote from the printer. The quote also included some design, but since we were fortunate to have Marnie's help on it, we didn't need to go that route. Based on how fast we could turn around things for, you know, handouts for town meeting or for the master plan books and such, we can get those out pretty quickly. So maybe the goal is to get them out this week. If not, early next week at the latest.
If Colleen needs help stuffing envelopes or putting labels, I can help.
Okay.
On Wednesday or Thursday, then I'm gone.
Yeah, that, that might be helpful. Marnie, was the, I just had a question for you, flew out of my head. Do you know, it's my understanding, Colleen showed me the labels that were going to go out to the town, that she received from Town Clerk. And, but is that the town meeting voters? There's a larger list. There's the whole town, and then there's the town meeting voters, right? And then there's the residents within the half-mile. So we can get that as if we're getting a certified abutters list, the radius around this train station. And we have the voter list, I believe. I'm just not confirmed that Colleen has the larger town list and how that would get mailed out. Is that just generic to everybody's address? There's no name that's associated with it? It just goes to an address?
I think it's like a resident mailing that the post office can accommodate. And, and Town Clerk, it's, we just have to have a certain number that goes through their system, and it gets automatically printed. I don't know the details.
We'll get them.
Yeah.
We'll get that. I'll brainstorm with Colleen on Wednesday when she's in, and we'll get this moving. The big thing was to get this flyer ready. And so one of the final questions is, there was a recommendation to have this a certain color that stands out. We can do Visa Green, I mean, depending on what the printer has to offer. The standards are kind of what you see at town meeting. You see green, you see Visa Green, you know, tree green. You see kind of the color of Marnie's shirt, sweater. You see yellow. Is there any preference? And it's just going to be one color?
Right.
Yellow?
I can pull up, my printer showed it, like, what a green would be. It's not neon, but she showed, so I can show you on green. But I was thinking, like, a neon pink or neon yellow or something.
And one last quick question. For the electronic backpacks for the schools, I'd be happy to reach out to the principals of the schools. Just, I would need to know whether you would want to include the letter or the postcard, but in this size. Your thoughts on that? I kind of like this with the, with the questions on it, but obviously, it's up to the Planning Board.
And does everybody prefer the portrait, the landscape version versus the portrait? So in your, in your handout, it's, yeah, there's the two colors. So there's the landscape version, and then the portrait is like that. So we should pick, we don't want to mix and match, right? We're just going to pick one style and go with it.
Yeah, I like the landscape.
The landscape's fine.
I think the landscape was intended for the postcard, and the, the vertical was intended for a flyer. That's the way she had, I had told her.
So when it's updated, if someone wants to just forward it to me, I'd be happy to get it to the schools. Thank you.
So which one? The, we're going to go with both? So we have a postcard version, and then the flyer is?
The flyer should go in the backpacks. It should be posted in a library, like, the thing that we can print off and just plaster everywhere in town, but not to trees.
Yes, that is correct.
And do you want the letter included in with the school backpack? Yeah. Just the flyer?
The other question is, should the Planning Board post its agenda for those, too? Like, now, just so it's out there?
Okay, so then we'll post the agendas. Those Planning Board agendas for two forums. Uh, yeah. But let me just quickly make sure we didn't miss anything here. Discuss that. We have the letter. We have our questions answered. We have social media approach. I just wanted to point out to the Planning Board and to the public that the MBTA Communities' guidelines was updated once again, August 17th, the one that I recently distributed to everybody. And there were links to that, and there were, one second. Here we go. So basically, the 495 Metro West Partnership put out a summary on their August 22nd newsletter. "State Announces Updates to Compliance Guidelines for Multifamily Zoning Districts Under MBTA Communities." And it says here, just so you have a general idea, "Allows an MBTA community to offset the minimum multifamily unit capacity requirement in certain multifamily zoning districts by up to 25% based on the unit capacity of a mixed-use zoning district that meets key requirements of the section guidelines, but for requiring a ground-floor non-resident component." Such, you know, so there's impacts for mixed-use flexibility. "It protects the financial feasibility of achieving, achieving housing goals where mixed-use zoning requires ground-floor non-residential uses by certain criteria." And then, "It allows MBTA communities to locate more housing in walkable and transit-oriented neighborhoods without jeopardizing existing non-residential resources and amenities." And then it adds a list of 13 discretionary grant programs to Section 9 of the guidelines to alert MBTA communities of additional grant programs that will consider compliance with Section 3A in making grant awards. And there's a list of 13 different grant avenues that will consider. If you apply for them, it, it appears it'll, you know, push you to the front of the line if you are MBTA community compliant. So I just wanted to make you and the public aware that those were the changes. And on mass.gov, and hopefully, we'll update this on our website for MBTA communities, it shows you a red-lined version of the guidelines and what they changed. So you can quickly reference that. And if anybody wants information in the public on that, they can just email me or contact me, and I'll send them the links. Because sometimes it's tough to find all the information.
Most of that red line was them changing their name.
Yes, yeah, there were lots of small, small changes. And then I just wanted to point out that Grant Farrington, one of the residents, had provided an email pointing out that the article in the Boston Globe regarding new guidance on the MBTA communities, and sent a link of the revised guidelines as well. And he said, "It appears that two significant changes were made. First, communities not in compliance risk losing out on more state grant funding. Additionally, towns are now available to require up to a quarter of the units zoned to be mixed-use, whereas previously, they could only encourage it." So that was a good summary from residents. Okay, and then, lastly, there was, well, almost lastly, there's frequently asked questions. I think Colleen had sent you a copy of that. It was quite lengthy. I didn't know if you wanted it to be that defined, if you've had a chance to look at it or not, if you even saw that you got it. Let me know if you didn't. It's a document that, that Colleen had modified for Southborough somewhat. But I think it was taken from a CHAPA frequently asked question sample. So that we should be, we want to have this ready at the forums, so that, and maybe a little bit ahead of time, so we can post it somewhere. People can read through it and already understand, might answer some of their questions. But we don't want it to discourage people from attending the forum either. Like, "Oh, now I know, I don't have to go." So it may be good to have as a handout at the forum.
I think that's good and goes into great depth. But I think for our purposes, something smaller and not as, as heady as that.
Yeah, something short and the big-picture items.
I can take that on and just make streamline and FAQ, just as quick, bullet point, high level.
Yeah, and some of the questions are, like, you know, for zoning geeks.
Yeah.
So...
Marnie, do you have this copy? Okay. All right. I appreciate the work you're putting into this.
Yes, thank you very much, Marnie.
I really do. We, with the applications we've been having lately, it's been a little bit harrowing in the planning, because we're trying to get them to submit complete applications, and sometimes it just takes a lot of effort. So, yeah, we're trying to keep on top of everything.
Anything else on this one? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in Zoom, on Zoom, want to ask a question on this?
And Mimi did put together a slide using the residency, just so you know, that I popped up on the Dropbox that shows the half-mile radius. So if you have any questions on that, um. We can follow up on that as well.
Okay, I don't see any hands, so I think we can move on to the next item. Public Works Planning Board.
So um, before we move on, I just want to see um. So our new DPW superintendent, Bill Kondiff. Um, when I spoke to him today, he said that if we ever. Would like to have him come and address something, just ask. And so this afternoon, um, I asked if he could attend today to talk about the Saint Mark's Street Park. Um, but this topic may also be something he might want to contribute to. So I see him in the um attendees list. And um. I'd like to promote him up to panelist. So maybe he has some input on this topic as well. If he's there, you might be waiting for the next. Yeah. Did we get a response from our letter sometime August sixteenth?
No, but we had a September eighth uh request for a response.
Hi, Bill, thank you. And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I figured you might have some feedback you'd like to say on this topic as well.
Good evening. How is everybody? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much for coming.
Sure thing. My pleasure. Um. I'm still in the process of evaluating and, and learning the ropes with uh the purpose of current Public Works Planning Board. Um, reviewing the special act and uh, you know. Considering what other towns do as well before I am prepared to provide some input on that.
Thank you. So we, so we sent a letter and I think this is just a follow-up that the letter has been sent. Anyone else have anything else on this?
And, and note that our letter did indicate that we asked for a response by September eighth.
Yeah.
So it's, the deadline has not gone by.
Mr. Maria.
Hi, Bill. I'm Debbie. I'm the um representative from the planning board on the Public Works Planning Board. Um, and I was wondering about your experience, um, you know, personally, if you've um. You know, worked successfully with um these types of boards and some of your previous roles. I also wanted to let you know, um, I've done, you know, a lot of looking um around um at other towns. Um, they're typically not called Pu- Public Works Planning Boards. A lot of times they're called Boards of Public Works because there's legislation. Um, a lot of towns have just adopted the legislation on pu- uh Boards of Public Works, but. Um, in, you know, you can scroll through, through and see a typical agenda topics and um mainly to do with um. You know, streets and water and cemeteries and, you know, things that you would expect. And I just wanted to add that, you know, I think Southborough has really. Um, lost a lot by not having meetings of these sorts. So it'd be very good to know um from you as you're evaluating things, you know, maybe there's an alternative. And what would the alternative be? Maybe in your experience, you've had other ways of working with the public. I do remember your interview and I was in the room at the time. And I was impressed that you mentioned that, you know, you like outreach and it's part of how you like to work. And so I'm curious, not for today, but sometime in the future. Um, you know, this is really about outreach. It's. Um, it's really uh, you know, organization um of what's going on in town and a mechanism. That people can find out what's going on in their roads. And I think that's really important to a lot of folks and we're missing that. Um, and so I just wanted to offer, if there's anything I can do, I, I have information from other towns. But also I'd be interested, you know, really to hear your perspective on. Um, you know, if we don't have Public Works Planning Board, what would, what do you think we could replace it with that would uh really fill the need? That a lot of the town um are, are feeling that we've lost over the last couple of years. Thanks.
Ms. Willam. Yes, um, hi, Bill. Thanks for joining us. Um, I just wanted to make sure you did receive a copy of the letter that we sent to the select board.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone on Public Works Planning Board?
Let me see. We have um, one, two, three, six attendees, uh, no hands raised at this time. Bill, I appreciate you coming forward in this topic unexpectedly.
Oh, happy to help.
Don't run away, cause Saint Marks is next.
All fun.
I think we're all set on this one. Next item on the agenda, another discussion item, Saint Marks Street Stonewall and Tree mitigation. Review of Saint Marks Park Plans.
Uh, so if you recall at um, one of the prior planning board meetings, um, the planning board. Sent a letter to um. The select board. Um, requesting that they respond to the promise of having the planning board be able to review the. Uh, proposed Saint Mark's Street Park prior to um it being built. And um, I guess it did go out to bid and the bids were high. So um, it's my understanding, and Bill can speak to this, that. Um, they're revisiting the design maybe to um, maybe streamline some of the. Items and reduce the costs of construction, because prices have gone pretty high lately. Um, so we did receive a copy of the plans from Mark Purple. And I provided that to the planning board members uh for their review. So um, that's what we have at this point.
Okay. And um, just so you know, Bill, our, our um interest in this is that there were um. Scenic road trees and scenic stone walls that were removed without the benefit of a hearing. And that hearing uh took place after the fact on uh May second. And at that time, um, the select board. Um, had assured the planning board that the, the eleven trees. Would be replaced in the hundred feet of scenic stone wall using the. Uh, original stones would be replaced um. At Saint Mark's Street at the corner of um Marlboro Road. And at the time, the select board had uh. Thought that those, that the mitigation would take place in the park, but when the plans came through, they weren't in the park. So our. Concern is to make sure that um those things are mitigated. Is anyone else on the planning board?
Hi, um. Mr. Kondiff, I'm Jesse Stein. I'm a member of the planning board. Um, has there been any discussion about sending these to uh Fussin O'Neil for review?
The design plan for, for, for the park?
Yes.
What, what would the purpose of that be, out of curiosity?
Right, because I understand that we're not gonna do a formal site plan review. But Fussin O'Neil could do essentially, you know. The same type of review, understanding it's non-binding in the way that our site plan review would be, but it could be helpful.
And then they. So, so Fussin O'Neil is your peer reviewer, is that it?
Correct.
Um, I don't see a problem with that other than schedule and timeline. I know the selectmen are anxious to have this bid. This year and get construction, at least the lion's share of construction completed this year. Um, now that being said, um, it's a very tight timeline. I know we were considering. Doing the plantings in the spring um associated with that, because it would be probably be a little late in the season to be. Doing plantings this year. Um, and if we wanted to have a successful project, um, you know, we would push that to next year. But um, VHB is, is, as Karina indicated, uh, in the process of retooling the design. Reducing some of the scope. Um, and when I say that, I'm talking about some of the stormwater features which are not necessary. To get that cost down, um, we're also taking a different approach of looking at this as a lump sum project as opposed to a. Unit price project. Um, we think the combination of those things will, will give us a little bit more of a favorable bid result.
So. My understanding is historically, uh, the library has had issues with groundwater. And we know there's been groundwater issues along Main Street. So when you say reduction in the stormwater. Um. Aspects, could you please elaborate on that in that context?
Certainly. So the library's issue has to, had to do, it's my understanding, more with uh surface water flow. Um, that during uh heavy downpours would cause flooding in the basement area. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Parent and, and it's my understanding that has largely been mitigated with an underground. Uh, groundwater extraction system that they've installed. Um, with regard to the stormwater on this park area, we're talking about a very small area, less than an acre. Um, and as you look at this plan, there's actually two pond areas that hold water, the rain gardens, if you will. Those are the ones more shaded to the right, correct? There's one there and there's another one there. Um, so we're looking at reducing those. I don't think there's a need for two of them. We can accommodate the stormwater issues with one. So VHB's in the process of consolidating that.
So you, you mentioned a water removal system in the basement of the library?
That's my understanding from conversations.
Okay.
Correct. Okay. Is this, so how many more meetings do we have on this, do we think? Is this it? Or are we gonna have this as an agenda item again in the future?
I think we have to have it as an agenda item because we're waiting for a response. Um, not, not just one, we're, we're um. The planning board has to provide comments on what they, just like with the forty B Mass Housing comment.
Right.
Right?
It wasn't clear to me like what the comment period is in this case, because. Well, I don't know if this is it, or if we're gonna.
At the last meeting, it had already gone out to bid and now we know the results, so um. We can probably find out from the select board, or maybe, Bill, you know, when their plan is to rebid this. Is there a timeline already with VHB to have?
We don't have a form, we don't have a formal timeline. Actually, VHB is going out and resurveying the site to get the current conditions. Uh, again, that's in an effort to provide the most current documents uh for. For, for um. For the lump sum bid, uh, we need current information. Um. So they're in the process of doing that. They'll be out there Wednesday to survey. Um, once that's complete, they will uh redesign. Um, and then we'll put it back out to bid. I'm happy to share this as we move along with you, Karina. Um, and then if it's, if it's warranted, you know, to come back before the board, I'm happy to speak to the board about it.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Kondiff, I mean, just, I'm one member. I would not expect you to appear at a reg- on a regular basis at these meetings. Um, that would be asking an awful lot of our DPW superintendent. But what would be terrific and uh really refreshing would be um. You know, a good, healthy line of communication where the planning department is. Uh, provided updated plans as they uh come to be, so to speak. I feel like we do often kind of get lost in the shuffle here. And um, you know, we're, we're sort of the last to know when really, I think it's in the town's best interest of we're. Right on the front edge of this thing. Um, so that would be greatly appreciated if we could have the next set of plans as soon as they're done.
Sure. Uh, I appreciate that.
Welcome to the Southborough. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate what you're, what you're commenting on. I also appreciate the fact that you're elected representatives of the community. And, you know, your input matters on these issues.
Ms. Willam. Yeah, so um, again, nice to see you, Bill. Uh, thank you again for attending. I echo Mr. Stein's point is a. I think we are just looking for a really close-knit collaboration in this, in this um. Town between all of the elected boards and um the employees, and I think particularly when things matter. Um, and we have oversight on historic. Stone walls and trees in particular. Um, I think my, my biggest issue right now is your, this is overbid and there's not even a stone wall. Which was supposed to be part of the plan, is part of the bid. And so what's even in here doesn't represent what the, was promised to the planning board by the select board. Um, that they would mitigate with the trees and this, the historic town wall, stone wall. And in my opinion, the historic stone wall has to be on this property, not. Um, on the Saint Marks proper, property or moved from another location. It should be represented in this park.
Understood.
Ms. Maria.
Um, I have two different thoughts. One is on the stormwater um comment. Um, I had done some digging um and met with representatives of the um trustees of the library. Who shared um some uh reports from some water engineers, uh Weston and Sampson and another water engineer. Um, that they um, you know, paid for to, to, you know, commissioned uh the study to understand better. The flooding situation at the library and, and also reached out with Mr. Parent and. It, it's been um a tremendous cost actually to the town to fix um the water, yeah, issue. Um, throughout the years, actually. But, well, one thing that we found through the hearing process is that. As VHB came to us um with some of the plans, at least in my opinion, as one person. I was never really convinced that there was a plan that addressed the, the water issue. In fact. The two thousand fourteen and the two thousand seventeen water um, uh engineers. Uh, drew maps and said the exact location of where the water was coming. There's still a puddle there today, actually. When it rains really hard, you can look at the intersection um with Saint Mark's Street and um Route eighty-five and, and there's a puddle. Um, so I guess as one member, I'm not convinced that um. We've addressed the water problem and that there should be a little bit of a light touch on it. And if anything, I think there should be a heavier touch. One thing I noticed is going back to these old reports is there was a number of recommendations for short-term and long-term. Um, mitigation and uh, I don't know that the town took most of it, to be honest, because it all had some sort of cost involved. Um, and so I, I think it's worth it actually to take a look at those reports. I, I know they're available. They're in our Dropbox if you'd like to see them, but. Maybe we can re, you know, look at them again. It, it could be that they're just too old and they don't, you know, pertain anymore, but. Um, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there's still a, a huge uh water issue to one of the town's, you know, favorites, favorite assets. The library. Um, so my other uh question uh is just generally, I just want to remind everybody about the timeline. Um, about the stone walls, um, because it's becoming like a little bit of a shell game. Um, there, there was a plan back in twenty twenty, I believe. And I believe Mr. Dennington had shared with us, if I'm not getting the date right, I think it was June twenty twenty-one, actually, sorry. Um, that, you know, some sort of uh bidding as part of the Route eighty-five Marlboro Road. Um, project, that there would be some stone wall removals and they could be moved somewhere else. Um, but then the property was pretty much defaced and that was in um October. Later in that year, twenty twenty-one. So. Planning Board had a scenic road hearing with the select board. In September twenty twenty-two. And the agreement was that there would be a replacement of the stone walls. At, I think it's a hundred linear feet. And I think it was widely agreed that. It was kind of a debacle down there. There was stones around. We have one select board member here who personally asked, can we please? Use the stones that were dug up in that space and make them, keep them on that lot, put them back. And it was a, what I thought was a successful meeting. Today, it's a complete disappointment to see that we're going back to twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one and trying to revive plans. And we still have plans that don't exactly show, they're, they're, they're not accurate. I'll just be honest. They, they don't show. Uh, the road layout um in accordance with where the stone wall would go. One thing I noticed is from the plan that we just got from Greg Russell at VHB. Um, is that it appears that, that there's going to be uh taking of a stone wall for the purpose of putting it on. Route eighty-five, unless I'm mistaken. That's how, that's one of the things that I found. That's totally inappropriate. You don't take stone walls from a scenic road and put them on a state road. So. You don't take stone walls from a scenic road and put them on a state road. So I think that's just inappropriate. Um, and it also looked like the the other placement of the stone wall was going to be on the north side of the new Saint Mark's Road, and that would be in front of Saint Mark's property. And so uh, that's also totally inappropriate. Now, that is a public way, um, but you know, we're talking about having kids from the library um and story hour and that those stones were to remain on on the town property. And so I have no idea why we'd be putting a stone wall in front of Saint Mark's property. Um, I just am baffled by what is going on here. And I would ask that we have one set of plans that have the correct layout of the road. I don't know if we have it. I don't know if it exists because we didn't actually accept the road. I'm not sure that the planning board has it, but I would like to see that. And I also know that there's a sidewalk project going on. So is there gonna be a stone wall with a sidewalk? How's that gonna work? Is it gonna be actually in the public way? Has anybody measured it to see if it's going to fit? Uh, and then the last thing is, there is another stone wall that we um have under a I don't say the right, I think it's a lease, we leased the stone, the area, a license agreement, thank you. Um, which is down a little farther, more on the little tippy part of the triangle. And it's been said over the years that once that uh stone wall went up, that the um puddling area, the pooling of, you know, puddle got got bigger. And I'm not sure. I I think I asked the town uh contract engineer and and he's not sure. Um, but what's the impact of putting a stone wall up in this area without fixing the drainage problem? Another stone wall. So I I think we really have to slow down. I I as one member wanna see an accurate plan. Um, I don't, I haven't seen, this this plan in front of us that that Greg Russell gave us is not accurate. It it doesn't clearly show the road, the right of way. We we're looking to the A and R plan now to so that we can try to marry the two up to see, you know, is it in the right of way? Is it on somebody's property? Where would the sidewalk go? This is what planning is all about, folks. We need to see the whole plan. And I'm still uh going to say, I think that we need site plan for this area because this is what happens when these little pieces are getting done all on the side.
Uh, just for clarification, I think the plan you see on the screen is where the proposed Saint Mark's parking lot is going to go. Okay? Yeah, that was in, this was in the um email.
So so that that squiggly line along Route eighty five, was that where stone was taken or where stone is going to go? So maybe I've misunderstood.
If I may, in in looking at it, with the stone wall uh right where actually the hand is, those stones in that wall are coming from where the curve was. It says R and R, existing stone wall. They're moving those stones down. So those stones that were there on the curve are now gonna go in a straight section on eighty five.
Okay, I just wanna say, so we're, we are to confirm, we're taking them from the curvy portion of a scenic ro- historic scenic road, and we're putting them on a state highway. That's the plan. Is that correct?
That's, as as I look at this, that's how I understand.
That's just not acceptable. And that wasn't agreed actually with the select board either. They were all in favor of putting it by the park. So that's not even part of the agreement. And then what was the other piece, Lisa? Do you know? There was another portion that was being moved and it's being moved over toward the
Here.
The red?
This piece right here.
Between the two, sorry, the two, between the two and the red is just over a hundred and seventy feet.
So the agreement was that the hundred linear feet would be used on the property that remains the towns at the park. So
That's that's on this side to the left. So the park is going to go to the left of the new roadway.
Yeah.
This is the new layout of Saint Mark's Street here. The proposed Saint Mark's uh parking lot will be on their newly acquired property here from the land swap.
Right.
And
And there'll be no stone wall over by the town park.
Well, I can't see that from here. Um, on on, this was the old right of way in here.
Yeah.
And there was a, an arch, an arc of uh scenic stone wall right here. And several trees, which you can see here, I think they're still referenced, that were removed. That the um, Bill, those were the ones that were um, removed without a permit. So it's this apex uh where there was a stone wall and trees. So the Saint Mark's proposed parking lot is coming before us for major site plan approval on September eighteenth.
Can I just add one thing for perspective also? What what doesn't show on these plans is in between the two sets of stone walls, that's where there's actually a stone wall now. So it is actually creating a connection to what is currently there. It's uh, I pulled it up on the Plan of Land, Saint Mark's Street Intersection. You can see here, it shows the existing stone wall in that empty space. So it's what they attempted to do was to connect all of the stone walls into one. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Okay, well, I do understand that, but you know, there's the the, you know, we are elected members of of the public, right? And um, we we've had plenty of people that have come to us to say that they're concerned about traffic, noise, other things, and that there'll be children in the park on the, in in the new Heritage Park or whatever we're gonna call it. And we're not even gonna have a stone wall there? I mean, those stones were to remain in that park. That was really my understanding. But this is not an acceptable plan. I get that half of the proposal is that it goes in the public way. Um, and and I get that it is a public way, but I think actually the Saint Mark's should come up with a plan for a stone wall in the public way. Um, we just are taking stones out of public property, putting them on state road and lining a parking lot where the priority should be the kids. The, remember, this was being sold as, you know, that there would be um story hour in the park and that sort of thing. The priority should be to put a stone wall around the park. And that's what I thought when we met with this um, the Select Board, that that's that was my impression is we're all in agreement. In fact, we talked about how one hundred feet linear feet was not really gonna be enough. And and historical commission and other groups have taken on, well, how can you extend that? How much would we need? We really need three hundred. Maybe this could be in pieces, but the focus was really on the park. And here we go again, that the planning board has not the opportunity to review that park. So we're letting other groups tell us what's within our control. Our control right now is the trees and the stone wall. And we didn't agree to put those stones anywhere except for around that park and to protect the kids. That's the priority.
May may I speak?
Sure.
Just a couple of comments. Uh, correctly uh referenced, I think Karina said, R and R means remove and reset. Um, so yes, the plan is to to remove and reset those stone walls from where uh Saint Mark's Drive, I think it's called, used to go out, oh, Saint Mark's Street. Uh, used to go out to the road where the puddle is basically. Um, that, it's my understanding, has been abandoned, so it is no longer a public way. And the public way actually wraps around closer to the town's history walk um park. So um I wanted to make that clear, that 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 original road is discontinued, so that's no longer a way. The other thing I wanted to comment on is we're we're blending two different projects, two different applications. Um, the one you're looking at on the screen now is from Saint Mark's. That is a Saint Mark's project that has nothing to do with the DPW. The DPW project is the prior page that that was just up on the screen. Um, the history walk, if you will.
Excuse me, can I just get clarification because we just received that today? So I'm I'm sorry if I misunderstood, but I thought that came from Greg Russell. That's the Southborough Town Contract Engineer. And I wouldn't think that he's also working for Saint Mark's.
No, the plan, the plan came from from Greg Russell. Actually, Karina sent a copy of that plan to me and I shared that with Greg. So I think a request went to Greg directly to see what was going on on that parcel and he forwarded that plan.
So is is Saint Mark's proposing to put a stone wall around as part, I'm sorry, I haven't looked at their parking lot proposal.
Um, I think we have to clarify first. So, Bill, the plan you're saying, um, so the plan on the screen right now is the is the plan for the park that went out to bid on town property.
Correct.
The other plan we were looking at with the red line with the stone walls, that's a sketch that I think VHB used to clarify to Lisa when she asked where are the stone walls in this, on the Saint Mark's side? And that Saint Mark's with the red line stone walls, that's coming up for major site plan approval for that parking lot separate from this. So when the new street got um laid out, Saint Mark's is on the north side with their new proposed parking lot on that end. And on the south side, between the library and the new road will be the park. So it's a little confusion with intermingling of the stone walls there because the stone walls were around the old layout. And in in Saint Mark's property that were removed and now things are moved around, so it you're kind of like overlaying where the problems were and and everything kind of shifted ownership.
Karina.
Correct, correct.
Can we, sorry, one sec, Mr. Kandif. Are you saying then that the stone walls are now being moved onto Saint Mark's property?
No, I'm, I have to look at the plans to say that.
But this
What we're looking at right here.
Not that.
Yeah.
Can you pull up the other thing for?
The other one, which is um it was this one here. So
Okay, so this is what is gonna be before us in public here?
No, no, this is a a sketch from many plans ago when the land swap was being discussed between Saint Mark's and the town. And I recall this as being like um a very schematic concept of where they might put their parking lot. Cause the proposal that's coming in looks very different.
Okay, is the proposal that's coming in on the same?
It's on that property, but it's a different layout of how the
So this is nothing?
No, this was just VHB, I think, trying to clarify to Lisa where those stone walls there were, you had some, Lisa had some questions about stone walls. I don't know, I'd have to
Back to the board clearly is concerned about town stone walls being implemented on Saint Mark's land or in the Saint
No, they're in the right of way.
Project. Abutting Saint Mark's? I, you know, I I have to agree with Mr. Maria that um to me, this should be part of the park. Intuitively.
So to clarify, and I think this is where all of this craziness is coming from. So when we had the um scenic road and tree move, removal hearing on uh five two twenty twenty three, which was after the trees and stone walls had already been removed. Um, the quote from the chair of the Select Board at the time stated that the plans for Saint Mark's Street Park were delivered today and committed that the board would ensure that the new trees and reconstructed historic stone wall would be included. Noting that the plan, yes, noting that the planning board would conduct major site plan approval.
Well, wait, that's not gonna happen.
Right, so here, yeah, herein lies the problem. A evidently, although it's never been formally discussed with us, that the Select Board is not gonna submit the plans for major site plan approval. And B, the park plans obviously don't have any stone wall in them. Um, so there were a couple things here. Is, so there there's seventy eight feet of stone wall, which is on a scenic road. It abuts Saint Mark's, but it's within the town right of way on a scenic road, whether we would accept that and not in the park. It seems curious that there's a sidewalk and then a stone wall.
Can we clarify that? I was wondering about, because there's a sidewalk project going on. Is the sidewalk on both sides of Saint Mark's, the relocated Saint Mark's Street?
No.
Only on the north side?
Yes.
And so the stone wall would go
On the, on the south side of this, of the sidewalk, that's what it looks like. It looks like road, stone wall, sidewalk.
If you look at the, if you look at the park plan that's on the screen, uh where the hand is, this is sidewalk which wraps around um the entrance to Saint Mark's Street. And that's it, it stops there.
That's a sidewalk on that side?
I think there's a side, yeah, there is a side, there there, it's it's already been built. So there's a sidewalk along uh Marlboro Road right here that's already been built down towards the library. And the driveway, if you go to the little library, you'll see um a new driveway entrance there that was laid out so that the water doesn't go down into the driveway of the library. And then that's that sidewalk will terminate right here. And as you know, um if you look up here, this appears to be either proposed, I can't tell from this plan, but proposed or existing sidewalk. I think, well, it has to be proposed because this is the new roadway layout. Um, so there's some sidewalk here. And then north of this is where the the parking lot for Saint Mark's will tie in, and I believe they have some walkway associated to that. I can't say a hundred percent, but in briefly looking at the plan. Um, so what I see is that the scenic stone wall, the hundred feet and the eleven trees that were cleared off of the property that used to be Saint Mark's, was supposed to be integrated into the park project. And it looks like, I can't be for sure, but this line type right here looks like that's stone wall. It's not. I don't know what that is.
Karina, I think if if you go back to one of the other plans, it shows it as an uh bid at alt.
Of what?
Of stone wall.
Yeah, the stone wall. Proposed balanced stone wall bid at, alt A, sorry.
Yeah, so it does represent stone wall, it's just and uh and a a bid at all. In other words, if the price is too high, you don't include it. Um, and there is vegetation here too, so.
Mr. Kandif, what, why would we, why would we put the stone wall on the right of way abutting the Saint Mark's property instead of somewhere on this plan?
Well, it's a budding, I got to answer for Bill, but it's a
Okay, so there's a
Right, the street, the new streets right here. So Saint Mark's is across the street.
To me, it's like with a little bit of thought, we could integrate the stone wall into this site.
Yeah. Sorry, Bill, I didn't
Yep, no, that's okay. Um, there's a few things, I think we're we're being a little premature. We're, number one, looking at an older plan. Um, it may have been bid with an ad alternate. Um, I understand the significance of having the stone wall and I'm gonna do what I can to make sure that the project and stone, we're currently in the design process, um redesign process, I should say. Um, Saint Mark's, we're not doing anything on the other side of the street with Saint Mark's. That's entirely their project. The plan that we're looking at, it sounds like was an early iteration of a concept that, you know, I think the board would be prudent to wait to see the application that's come in before you for that. Then make your determination and comments based on the revised plan. Um, with regard to uh the town's plan, uh like I say, I'm gonna, I gotta do what I can to make sure we include that stone wall as part of this and the trees that were removed. Um, and then we'll proceed from there. One thing that I do wanna harken back to with regard to the storm water, because I know I didn't get to address it. If you look at those two shaded areas for the rain gardens, the rain gardens are really only about storm water quality. It's not about reducing the volume. It's about treating the water before it goes into the street drainage system. So you'll notice that we have interconnections with the street drainage system on those rain gardens. We're just simply looking to reduce the number of those from two to one.
Karina, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The um, when the, when the A and R was done, I'm trying to figure out if Concom is gonna take a look at this water thing and I can just forget about it. No, because it's less than an acre. Is that why? When it was A and R, isn't it more than acre now that they will see it? Or?
What what part are you talking about?
For storm water for the Saint Mark's, the upcoming Saint Mark's parking lot? Will Concom get to, get to review that?
Yes, actually, I think they've already, um, they've submitted to conservation already for, I believe, a storm water management.
Okay.
I can tell you.
Okay. I'm not sure where we're at, but I will just say, a promise is a promise. And um, we have the plan And um, we have the plan, the select board's word that the stones that were I would say, you know, I don't know what the word is, ripped up or whatever and from the earth, we were told that they would remain in the park. Um, and I also want to say, I I don't um, I mean, I agree that the, a public way is a public way. But the agreement was that, you know, it'd be, it'd be fantastic if Saint Marks wants to put a stone wall up around their parking lot. But I believe that this, when we met in good faith with the select board, we were discussing keeping those stones on the property. And I don't know what we do now, but I really am getting kind of confused by these plans. And um, I would like to see, you know, I hope a plan comes around that has the road and the right location with the right sidewalks, where they're really going. I mean, this is what planning is and we're not getting the plans. Um, so I really, I don't know if we can re- request that as part of this process that um, you know, we get to see an accurate depiction of the road, the discontinued road and the uh where the trees will be relocated and where the stone wall will be relocated and it, make it clear that it should be on the property. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Barshill?
Thank you. So based on what the uh Mr. Kandif has said tonight, I think we need to see further plans. I think, I don't know what we're gonna gain by further discussing this. Other than, I know Ms. Gillespie is at the mic and I know she was on the working group and she was involved in the rain gardens. So I would really like to hear from her uh as an open space member as well, the value of these rain gardens and what we would be losing by taking them out.
And just before you start, I wanted to just clarify, um, I can confirm that um we were notified by conservation that public hearing for an application for stormwater management permit for the zero, zero Marlboro Road has been scheduled for September fourteenth at seven P M. Um, the applicant is Saint Mark's School. Uh redevelopment of existing parking area of Saint Mark's School to coincide with the new roadway layout and town improvements of Saint Mark's. So they are going for stormwater management. Sorry, sorry, Freddie.
Ms. Gillespie?
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie and I am speaking in my role as the, although the commission hasn't discussed this right now, but I'm speaking in my role as the Open Space Preservation Commission, I'm the chair and I was their representative to the Saint Marks Road Park Task Force, I think that was it. And I sat on that committee for six to eight months. I wasn't there at the beginning and I wasn't there at the end, but I did weigh in and their final discussion of the plan. And I want to say that that committee worked really hard and long and came up with a plan that when, before the final, final plan that, you know, they a very divergent group of opinions came together and I remember the meeting, it was right around Christmas time that they all said, we support this. And that was, you know, really significant. And then they continued on after that and I wasn't there for the further discussions there. But at the very end, I am, I thought the, the composition of the plans. And I just want to give you a little bit of the involvement of the Open Space Preservation Commission. When this, and I know the project has changed many times, but to understand the process for me, for our commission. Um, when it first came up as a grant application, we were asked, it was presented as a pollinator the garden area and history, historic site um trail or site, you know, historic walk, right? And both the Historic Commission, I believe, and the Open Space Commission wrote support letters for that at the time. What came out of it and it was a very vastly big, you know, like a arboretum type pollinator garden, which was not our plan and I was like, whoa, who's gonna take care of that? But it evolved from that and we felt we got a lot of the pollinator needs met in the plan that was um not quite the final plan, but that was there because trees and shrubs can satisfy that. The issue I wanted to bring up about, um, because I'm hearing the re the re um vamping of this and some of it is not just the rain gardens, but planting, I heard. The, the trees were significant, I just want to make this on the record. We were talking originally, the committee was set up before I was on it to look at some sort of honoring of the native population that was here before the settlers. And one of the things, um, and that has never been finalized and it may come up in the future, some sort of art or something. And I was very aware of this as a tree city. We're losing a lot of our street trees because of they're interfering or they're dying. We're gonna lose more with the Emerald Ash ore. And to get these heritage trees, that was the name I've used, um, and the committee used, that are big trees, widespread, you know, limbs, you have to plant them. It's, it's our gift to the future and it's a recognition of the past. So those large trees are critical to keep there, in my opinion. And I think the name Heritage Park came from that discussion about the heritage of those trees. And again, the importance, takes a hundred years to, you know, maybe for the trees to grow, but, you know, if you don't plant them now, we're not gonna have any in the future. So our gift to the future and a look back at the past. So that was significant. I just want to have that on record that when you're looking at reducing the planting scape, those big oak trees, I believe they would be, were very important. And then um, I will make one comment about you had a requirement of trees from the um historic road that were taken down. That needs to be, I believe, planted with specific um criteria for what qualifies. And one of the things, when I said the, the tree planting list and the, the landscaping came out pretty good, at the very end, somehow they made the maple trees, I believe, are cultivars. And I don't think, you know, just so that, I know the planning board's aware, but just so that anyone else making plans, that wouldn't satisfy the replacement of those trees. It would be simple to switch them back to the straight species. And then I wanted to speak to the rain gardens and I'm not a stormwater expert, that's why I was hoping you would have site plan review. And we all know that's a difficult site. I have been working on the library grounds for quite a few years now with a pollinator preservation garden we have there. And I'm very familiar with the water situation over there. And we have found even further away from this site. Um, I mean, there's a swell with, we didn't know what it was. There's a swell with two stone walls right next to our pollinator garden. We have since planted in it because that helps. But um, and we told it didn't hinder the stormwater and there's a storm drain. That whole area just, and it's not stormwater running off, it's a high water table. And after it rains heavy, it can stay for a week later. It looks like you're walking in grass, but you're walking in a puddle. You know, it's like, you know, an inch deep of water. So what I have noticed is where the southernmost rain garden, the smaller one, there's a, there's a depression over near the, it's actually on the library grounds, but in that area, water comes up from the ground after a rainstorm, flows out of that and down the library parking lot like a stream. I've taken videos. Um, I crashed my phone and don't have them anymore, but um, even after they did the mitigation of stormwater um for the road, new road, which things got better. You know, there was a reduction. Still, after a heavy rainstorm, that will happen. So saying that these rain gardens, I, I was under the impression that they will help infiltrate water, not just clean it because the plants will take up water and they help it flow. So that was one of the um thoughts I had and maybe we misunderstood what um, or I misunderstood what the um, we were told by the, the consultant for the, the committee. But um it was also another way to get the pollinator plants in there to satisfy the, you know, the original intent of this being a pollinator garden area, which we are not looking for anything like what they originally had. But I'm just, um, one of the issues when they put the, the bigger kidney bean up there, one a little bit to the north of a rain garden, was to somehow get the, the water off the area where the kids are gonna be sitting. Because, you know, even if you go there on rainy days, that whole area is very, very deep. I know that's, there's no vegetation there, but vegetation absorbs water, right? It's very, very deep puddles after a rain event or a snowstorm. Now there's big piles of soil there, but if that doesn't help with the the um water infiltration, I think you need to forget about having a regularly available park where kids can come out and sit because it's gonna be wet a lot of the time. You know, from what I've seen. So those are my um points that if you're not gonna, um, and I don't, I understand reducing the scope of things. I thought it was the hardscaping, not the, not the rain gardens that were the, the overage. So I would hope we could keep some of that there. It sounds like you were thinking of reducing it, but not eliminating. But I would just be really interested in what the impact to the water absorption will be. If that's really just to clean the water, I thought it actually helped infiltrate it. So I, I'd like more info on that at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
May, may I speak to the stormwater issue?
Certainly, yes.
So rain gardens will slow down water, allow infiltration. We're absolutely correct in that. Um, what I found interesting was your comment about high groundwater and having a groundwater issue. Um, because that would not be uh compatible use for the high groundwater uh situation you have at the library. You can achieve the same level of stormwater best management practice with having one rain garden instead of two separate large ones. Have one, you would still get the same quality of water treatment. Um, it would reduce the amount of infiltration into the ground and it would send some more into the stormwater system in the street. Again, it's a cost-saving measure. You'll still have some of the species that you're interested in. It just wouldn't be twice as much.
Can I respond to the chair? Thank you for that. Um. I'm not, like I said, I don't know the stormwater piece of it. And you're right, when you think of it conceptually, if we're saying there's a high water table infiltrating, it's not gonna help. But it's also the enviro trans, how do you say it, enviro transpiration? You know, the plants take water and then it, you know, goes up. I think there's still some benefit of the plants absorbing some of the water. Um, but I don't know at what level. So as long as you're thinking of reducing but not eliminating and, you know, de- being aware that, I just wanted to make the point that it's not, in my opinion, what I think of as stormwater, which is, you know, water running off pavement or hard, hard surface. This is water that's there. And um, I thought from the prior um VHB. So I didn't come up with two storm, rain gardens. That wasn't my um thing, but when they were there, they looked, you know, the planting area looked pretty nice. So I thought they put two in before a reason to deal with the water. So maybe that's, you know, you can do it with one, that's great.
Yeah, the other thing we achieve is you'll notice there's two road openings going into the um into the road, which is newly paved and I'd like to eliminate that. I, you know, the one to the south, it looks like we can, we can tap into that structure without, without actually going into Route eighty five.
And um one other comment that didn't get import, in, imported into this or comments were made during the plan, you know, the discussion of this, that didn't make it onto the final plan. And that was to be using, um, and it came up quite often in the public forum that the committee had, that people would like to see reduced lawn, formal lawn, where there's not a lawn needed. So certainly where the kids are sitting or where they're playing, but in areas around the trees where people aren't going to be walking a lot or, you know, you're not playing croquet or, you know, heavy duty lawn activity, that there could be um native plantings as a lawn alternative, some sort of native ground cover instead that won't need as much gasoline at this time powered, you know, mowing and blowing and all of that. So that was just something, if you're redesigning it, to consider adding a little bit of, you know, lawn reduction. Where lawn isn't needed. We certainly know that lawns are needed in parks. We never advocated for that. So thank you very much.
So Bill, thank you very much. As you may have surmised, there's um, there's strong opinions on this. And I think that uh your advice is correct. We should wait and see what the next plan is. This uh plan was sent to us by uh Mark Purple and then the select board chair followed up by saying, but we're redoing it. So um, we didn't know where to go and this is what we had. So this is where we were gonna start the, the discussion. And if um having the stone walls in the park as was originally assured by the select board would be fabulous. Um, also our our, we're a tree city and our uh town code requires native planting as does the select board's uh tree policy. So I don't know how those two cultivars got in there. Um, or five cultivars, I think there are. Anything else from the board? Thank you, Bill. I really appreciate it.
Thank you and it was nice to meet everyone.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Corina.
Next. Um, a discussion item. Forty B one twenty Turnpike Road and two fifty Turnpike Road. Um, the amended plans. So one twenty, I think that's just a follow-up that we had sent the, the letter to Mass Housing. There's no changes on that. I don't think there's any additional comment on that, is there? Yeah.
So a quick question, has the comment period been extended on both of these or just two fifty?
Two fifty.
Okay, so the comment period for our purposes on one twenty, we're done with that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Correct, and we did receive confirmation that Mass Housing did receive the letter and they said thank you.
I was just wondering if there was any additional information for the board from the town planner on this.
To give you, would you like me to give you a quick update on new information?
We have a hand up. I don't know if that was from the previous uh.
Would you like me to elevate?
Yeah.
All right, Kevin Miller in the attendees has his hands, has his hand raised. I'm going to promote him to panelist. I'm sorry if we missed his um question. Hi, Mr. Miller, if you unmute, then you can let us know.
Yeah, I did, Corina. Th- thank you. Um, and Mimi, yeah, it was pursuant to the last item. So if you've moved on, that's fine. Um, if you're willing to listen, I'll, I'll speak.
Sure, go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, okay, well, this was about the Saint Marks uh Street Park and I'll be quick.
Did you just identify your address?
Sure, Kevin Miller, eighteen Lattasquama Road.
Thank you.
Um, I was a member of the Saint Marks Street Park Working Group and I'm Chair of the Historical Commission. Um, and I wanted to say quickly a couple of things. I'm very thankful to um Mr. Kandif uh for coming and being so transparent and forthcoming and clear in his explanations. I, I am at the same time profoundly disappointed um in the news about these rain gardens and wanted to make clear, um Freddie brought this up and I'll sort of reinforce what she said. Um, I didn't misunderstand at all what we were told by VHB from day one because they were very, very clear. And this is one of the selling points, of course, for the creation of the park in the first place, was that you had to have those rain gardens. And you had to have them for stormwater mitigation and for mitigation of flooding problems at the library. Um, you know, the, the Saint Marks Street Park Working Group wasn't an elected board, it was appointed, although nonetheless, you know, um, among the seven members, we had the Chair of Open Space Preservation Commission, that was Freddie, Chair of the Historical Commission, myself, the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees and now current Select Board Member, Marguerite Landry, a Select Board Member and now the current Chair, Mr. Dennington, and the Chair of the Public Accessibility Committee and Mr. Sines. Um, and I can tell you that we work, you know, we met several times a month for over a year, long, uh always in good faith, but often contentious meetings to try to design a park based. to try to design a park based on facts that we were given by VHB that now turn out to have been incorrect. And all I will say about this, for whatever it is worth, is that had we been told that two rain gardens, especially that larger one, were not necessary, we would have designed a different park. The removal of one of those rain gardens, I mean, I don't recall what the lower of the two bids that I heard the select, last Select Board meeting were, but I do recall the higher one, and that was $492,000, which is nearly double the $250,000 budget. And I am skeptical that the reduction of one rain garden is going to bring that down within budget. But unfortunately, with the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group now disbanded, having apparently concluded our business, we're going to have park designed by reduction, rather than a proactive, you know, if we had been given a clean slate and been given the facts that, you know, Mr. Kundif so articulately laid out for us. Again, we would have designed a different park. So I don't know where that leaves us. I, I hope there's some thought given. For instance, rather than to simply remove, you know, let's finally get to the bottom of what the engineering facts are. And if the park design has to be revisited, I hope it might be done also with an eye toward procuring more money for doing, for making the park, because I think that's going to be necessary. Anyway, I, I thank you very much for giving me the time after you've moved on. And again, my concern was for my fellow working group members, because we frankly worked our behinds off for a very long time. And this sort of feels like the rug being pulled out from under us. So, you know, I don't know what you, what you can do or what the Select Board can do. But it seems like a sad moment. And I would like, personally, I have no authority and no power to do so, but I would like to get to the bottom of the misinformation that caused us to design a park with two rain gardens, because we were clearly told that those were absolutely essential. And, you know, thus the rest of the working group deferred to Freddie Gillespie's expertise on the matter, for instance, of plant selection, to basically suck up that water. Thank you very much, Planning Board and Madam Chair.
Thank you, Kevin. There've been a lot of rugs that have been pulled lately.
So Mr. Miller?
Hi, it's Jesse Stein. Just wanted to make sure you're aware that Town Council effectively advised the Select Board that they don't need to send this to us for site plan review.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fully aware of that.
Okay. Yeah. We're relegated to a comment.
No, I understand, and I am as well. I'm just, again, wanted to express the fact that, you know, we worked really hard and we worked with the best information we were given, and we took that information in good faith and tried to move forward with it. So it's a little bit frustrating. And again, I, I, I'm so appreciative, appreciative of Mr. Kundif coming in and explaining clearly. I, I do have some worry, just as a citizen, as a taxpayer, about what is the water situation at the library and is that going to be effectively resolved? I'm sure, you know, Marguerite is quite concerned about that, I'm sure.
But hopefully, hopefully, the Select Board is watching. And I, I've said it when Select Board members were present before. I've said it to them offline when I've interacted with them in town. It's not because Town Council told you that you don't have to do it. It's because it's in the town's best interest to consider submitting this, as originally discussed, to the Planning Board for Site Plan Review. We do site plan review. That's not something that the Select Board does. So if, if, if it were submitted to us for site plan review, we would have actual authority over exactly the types of things that Mr. Miller was just talking about. It's a perfect example of why it makes sense to submit things to a planning department and a board for review. So, Mr. Miller, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. Anything new on 120?
Sure. One second here. So on 120, just to reiterate that the comment letter to Mass Housing from the Planning Board was sent to Mass Housing and confirmation that they received that within the timeframe. Let me see here. Interestingly enough, I did receive a call from Mass Housing's appraiser, who had asked me about some information about 120 and the buildability of that lot. So I explained what I understood, and then I recommended that she contact Mark Purple to reach out to Town Council, to understand Town Council's feedback on the frontage and the special permits from the past and how it impacts the current site plan for 118, 120, and is that lot buildable or not under the circumstances. So she appreciated that. Other than that, there's no new information on 120.
Maureen?
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm having just a mental moment. Did we formally submit a request to Town Council?
Oh, I meant to send you those emails. It was an email request, which is how we formally submit them now. So I think I did pull it out, like four or five questions, including frontage and where's the A and R handled, et cetera. And we did receive feedback in a paragraph or two. I think it was, what I'll do is I'll retrieve those and I will either send them to you or put them in the drop box. And I'll, I'll have them ready under, for next meeting to, to answer any questions on it.
Anything else, 120? Two fifty.
Okay.
So we did send our letter on two fifty while you're getting ready, I'll just.
Yeah, that's good.
We did submit the letter to two fifty to Mass Housing, based on the plans that we had at the time and based on the previous deadline for comment. And we have subsequently received amended plans and a deadline to comment on those plans of September 8th.
We also received a presentation from Ferris Development, like, I think it's like four or five slides that explains what has changed on the plans. So if you want, I could briefly go through those very quickly. So first I'll put the first sheet or the second sheet that kind of shows the overall layout of the revised forty B proposal site plan. And then I will also add. I had it here, hold on a second. This one, here we go. So hold on, I'm just trying to get there. Share. Okay. So if we scroll down, it's a little sensitive here. So they did an executive summary, and what they did here is they outlined eight things that they updated on the plans. And they include removing the long and tall retaining wall along the east side of, along Parkerville Road. The building can, so the building could be lowered. So essentially, they lowered the building by about 15 feet. And what that did is it allowed them to not have to have this retaining wall, less visual impact to the budding neighborhood. There was a 12-unit garage building on the south side of the proposed apartment, and they removed that, and then they moved some of the parking down. Here it says that they dropped the elevation of the building by 15 feet, which also allowed the driveway to be at a lower grade, also reducing the height of those retaining walls that are interior to the property. Not having a lot of fill brought in. They had proposed 53,000 cubic yards of fill to put the building on and the site itself wherever needed. They've reduced that based on the new plan down to only 20 to 25,000 cubic feet, which is a better balanced split or site plan. Again, here they did, they shifted eight parking spaces to one side to be further away from the property line. And again, the elimination of the 12-unit garage on the back. So if I go through these, you can see on the plan. See what I'm looking at here. So this rectangle here represents the proposed building. Okay? And there was a large retaining wall proposed along the side here somewhere. So they removed that. Then the retaining wall is right here along the driveway entrance. Those will be shallower if not even needed. And then there was a building back here for 12 parking spaces. They removed that. And then these parking spaces right here, they shifted. Were eight spaces here that they moved. And again, this just moved them away from, like, they moved them further south. I think that's what happened. I'd have to look at the other plan. I think they were further to the Yeah, I, I'm guessing they were further north here, closer to the property line. I can't tell on the plan here, but are we? Oh, they were over here. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Can't always remember it. Yeah, there's a lot of going on on here. So they moved them from this side of the building to the back of the building. Okay? And then generally, they dropped the elevation of this building by 15 feet here. Okay? So let me move on to the next slide. Yeah, so you have a slab or a foundation, right? And then you build your stories on top. They sunk it down. So instead of filling the land and building the building on top of it, they, they regraded it and dropped the building so less fill. But lower, it starts fifteen.
But it's not on top of 20 feet of the, which is what they had proposed.
Yeah. Here again, they're pointing out that the 193-foot-long, 12-to-18-foot-high retain- retaining wall was removed from the plan, because now they're not building up the ground anymore and they had to have retaining walls to hold soil. And then also the building, here's that, you know, a zoom in of the 12 garage units that they also removed from the plan. Okay? And then this is actually the driveway coming in towards the building. The building's now right down here, the parking. And they had a lower building, first floor provides the ability to lower the driveway closer to the existing topography. And it reduced, if not eliminate, the need for the retaining walls along the driveway. Less fill requirement, because everything's dropped down lower now. They wouldn't, they're not building up the site anymore as much as they were based on this presentation. And then they talked about additional mitigation steps to be taken to support the neighborhood with more landscape screening in these various aspects right here. And they are proposing these giant green, green giant trees, arbovites. And then down here, they discuss, they understand that Southboro finds native species important. So that still has to be probably worked out. And then here are the eight spaces that were moved back of the, to the back of the building. And that's it. Those were the changes as Ferris has outlined them. I haven't gone through the plan myself, piece by piece, but hopefully that's close to what they did on the plan.
Any additional comments, Mr. Stein?
So I'm trying to pinpoint, you know, looking at it from the perspective of the August 17th letter that this department generated with our comments. If we were to revise it based on these changes, I'm thinking along the lines of what I guess you would look at number 10. Because, I mean, isn't that, that's sort of the point of this agenda item, is it not? For us to amend our comments for resubmission?
Or, or to send additional comments on the amended plan?
Well, okay, I guess I kind of look at it as that's the plan now. So now we have to submit comments to the plan. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me, either way.
So we would actually be sort of revising our letter.
And I have shared it on the screen now, Jesse, so if you, whatever you refer to, we can look at.
Okay. So number 10 seems to be the first one that's impacted, that I noticed. So we would change 20 feet of fill to what? What's the, do you know the change? Appropriate change there?
No, I don't know. All I know is that the revision says that they're dropping the elevation by 15 feet. So the site was purported to be set on top of 20 feet of fill. So if, if you look, I'd have to look at the contours, but it looks like it'd only be five to 10 feet of fill, maybe.
What's our due date on this?
The due date is
September 8th.
September 8th.
So we're not going to meet before? So this is it? This is our chance to do this?
This is it.
Okay, so I suggest that we revisit number 10, 11. I mean, a lot of this to me is still appropriate. Number 13, in my opinion, still applies. I didn't see that it was straight negatives in the revision. Maybe I misunderstood. So that can stay. 14 would stay. I didn't see any changes to lighting, so 15 would stay. Do they, did they install elevators in the revised plan?
Not according to the, I, I'm assuming that they're, without looking at it in great detail, that the revisions they showed in their presentation are what they revised.
And I didn't see anything about electric vehicles, but so as far as any changes to our letter, just one more spin here.
Let's go back to the top.
You know, you, Corina, you had a, you had like an oval circle on that legal pathway question, number three. What was the change on the revised plan that impacted the access to the site from the street to Route 9? Is there any change?
No. There's no change.
So that problem starts, still sort of exists.
What happened is they, if they lower the site, the driveway's lower. Before, they were building it up, so they had to do retaining.
Okay, so that's, so number three stays.
It's just whether how high it is.
Okay, so unless I'm missing something, it's just number 10 and 11 that we would be looking to revise. And I didn't see anything else that warranted personally any additional comments, but leave it to the board. It would be really helpful if we knew what the amount of fill is that they're going to use. Or maybe we just take out the 20, the, you know, because it's still a four-story building, which is still, you know, something we would have concern over. So we could maybe even just change the wording. I don't want to take up too much time, though, because there's, the other members are going to have stuff to say, so we'll come back to that.
So so far, 10 and 11 should be addressed.
Yeah, I actually agree. 10, I think you could just eliminate the first sentence and just say building height should be no more than three stories. And I think we used their new height. Um, and just say building height should be no more than three stories. Um, and I think we use their new height, which is the. They went from three fifty-three to three thirty-eight. Still quite tall. Um, so we could maybe use their new footage. And then on eleven, I think a public demonstration still should be staged. We just don't need to say. Um, of the proposed building on top of the proposed twenty-five feet of fill. I think it's just taking that. Specificity out of that sentence. And then otherwise, I think it's everything would still. Be maintained unless, of course, the neighbors have something else that we would incorporate. That's all for me.
Mr. Maria?
Um, I agree. I just wanted to ask about twelve, because aren't they proposing some screening with this modification? So maybe we just have to tweak that sentence?
I have comments on the proposed screen.
I mean, I think the proposed building will still be clearly visible. So I just wouldn't want, you know, mass housing to say, oh, no, they took care of the screening already, because here's a nice picture of Emerald, whatever. Um, I, so maybe somehow strengthen that sentence to say it's still a four sto- I mean. Even with the proposed screening, it's still a very large building and. I don't know how that sentence could read, but I think it might apply.
What about if we just took off without the, at the end of the sentence, without any screening offered and just left it? The proposed building will be clearly visible from several abutting neighbors, period. And then significant screening should be required. Um, just one question. Karina, can you pull back up? If you don't mind, from the presentation that you brought up, the eight parking spots and the changing of the spots. I just want to clearly see where they moved from to, because the eight spots are now closer to the property line of two abutters. And I just want to be clear where they were at.
Yeah, let me, I'm going to call up the other plan.
Sorry.
That's okay, I just have to find it. I'm just trying to see on my screen, it's hard to. Let me see. So it, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry, Karina, I don't mean to cause a problem. I figured just as I was speaking to it that if.
No, I'm, I'm trying to see. Maybe if I see your plan for a second, I just want to find them. Because I think I'm looking, I think the preliminary plan that they provided had them over there already.
Believe it was in the, the um. PowerPoint that they gave, as you went through the PowerPoint.
The new PowerPoint or the prior PowerPoint?
The one that you just prior to putting this on the screen that you just did, I believed it was on there. Okay, thank you.
Yep, here we go, one, two, three.
So that just shows where it's at now. There was another one that showed where it came from. Uh, so I'm assuming, even looking at that, it moved from the back of the parking spots towards the north, yeah. I thought there was something that showed it was in there along the retaining wall.
If I may, I saw a view where it was completely opposite of where they're now proposing it. So it was on the other side of the building.
Yep.
The far edge of of the property line.
That's what I thought. It was more to the north. Nope.
You didn't see that in the presentation, this current?
Yeah, in one of the uh, the site plan views.
All right, hold on, just give me one second and I will find it.
Slide number seven.
On the current one, just?
Yep.
Proposing a small shift in back lot parking located near the south lot line. We updated the alternative plan to include a shift of some of the parking spaces in the rear slightly south. To the east. To add a small amount more buffer from the residence. So it was my impression that they just moved these spaces.
I thought it was on the opposite side of the building.
I'm not, I don't see that though. I mean, I know the, um, I know that you mentioned.
Sorry, I don't mean to to tie things up longer, but I just, I'm always worried.
It's not clear to me.
Yeah, I'm worried when I see eight spaces, eight additional spaces, and we're talking about buffers closer to two abutting properties.
Well, I'm looking at a plan previously, um, a guide map from the sidewalk, and those eight spaces were already here.
In that spot?
In that spot. And I think what they did is. They're saying they moved them. I'd have to look closer.
Maybe I misunderstood, Karina.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what it says. It says slightly south. Spaces in the rear slightly south to the e- east to add a small amount of more buffer from the residence. You found it? Yeah, can you just share?
And if I just, if I just made this longer.
No, see, the spaces are there.
Okay, I thought they took the eight spaces from up top and moved them down. Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Okay. Because this is what's in the Dropbox now.
I have this, the June sixth, twenty twenty-three plans that were originally submitted to mass housing.
Right, and the new plans are dated.
I stand corrected then, thank you.
August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is that the old plan?
See, they used to be centered on the back of the lot. It it looks like the eight spaces used to be centered on the back of the lot and they just kind of slid them down.
Okay.
Along that same line, okay?
And I withdraw my comment. Thank you.
And um.
So there are seven spaces, excuse me, seventeen spaces on the new plan. So I'm just on my, I I have the Dropbox up on my iPad here.
Yep.
And I'm looking at page ten of twelve of the new plans.
Hold on, I'm getting there. Going to find them. Updated plans.
See, this is why I miss the good old days when we had proponents come in and do presentations, you know.
It also helps.
Instead of this thing where relegated to comments and we have to kind of like.
Find.
Swing it.
Yeah, because you have to find where it is. So here is the current um proposed site plan dated eight seventeen twenty-three. Okay? And if we move down a couple sheets, we can get to the layout of the parking. Here we go. So here is the. I'm on page S two, which is page six.
Okay.
Page six on the screen and we're zoomed into that. But there's no.
Where's the page?
Bottom right. Are you on the PowerPoint?
S two.
S two. It's PDF page number six.
U two.
Yeah, I was looking at uh, utility U two in the lower right-hand corner. Karina?
All right, let me get there.
Yes.
What does it say, U two?
Page ten.
Okay, so we go. Here it is.
Yep.
Okay. If you look on the. Right side of the building.
Yep, the northern northeastern corner.
Says seventeen spaces, it looks like they did.
Okay.
Yep.
And on the prior plan.
Is that the point?
Yes, two is better for for the parking.
Which one, S two?
Yeah, S two has a better depiction.
Yep. Right here. Yeah.
Which is in.
Well, all they did was took these eight spaces in the bottom left corner.
Okay.
And they slid them down further south.
And marked them ten spaces on this page.
Yeah, and there's ten there. However, the presentation. Said eight. Yeah. Little discrepancy there. And if we look at.
Do you see this page?
Yes.
Okay, does that clear up any questions you have about the parking? Okay.
So all of those parking spaces remain, right, in the. North side of the. West side of the building.
And the north side, they eliminated eight spaces that were originally in the June sixth plan. From the north side, so those are gone. Thought, yeah.
Yeah, it's just hard to see on this plan.
So this one. They have nineteen and seventeen.
On the new one.
No, that's the, that's.
And now they have. Nineteen and seventeen still.
So those are still the same.
These spaces look like they stayed the same. It's these spaces that were centered over here more. They were kind of on this, okay. It's hard to look on. I like full-size hard copies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? I, so my comments are on the um. I I don't think it's ever a good idea to have a monoculture of um landscaping and deer-like arbivite. And although the green giant is supposed to be. Deer-resistant, it's more deer-resistant than regular arbivite. And regular arbivite is like a deer magnet. So I think deer still eat it, but maybe not as much. And I think it would um. Serve the purpose of a better buffer if there was um. Different shrubs in there and not just a monoculture of one type. And there are a lot of native shrubs that are uh deer-resistant. I think that's what's mine.
And that would relate to comment number.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Number twelve. Okay.
Yes, sir. You're up.
Um, so John Palmer, one thirty-one Parkerville, I've been in front of this group before. Uh, Karina, I actually uh submitted some written comments because I think it's important to submit written comments on this. It's important to note that. We, as a butters, did not see the level of detail that was um. Put into the, into this uh revised site plan. So that's, that's, that's the first point. I think there's still, i- if you go to the second page. I I think there's still a question, a big question around whether or not the developer has. Uh, uh, control over the site to do what he's proposing. So that remains. I'm not going to rehash that. Uh, John's already uh provided comments on that uh several times before. But it begs the question, why hasn't this site been developed, um, you know, in all these years? Um, so, so Karina, if you can go to the next page. When I look at uh this revised site plan and all the detail uh that is is now provided. It begs all kinds of concerns and questions for me as a director butter to what's being proposed. Um, and I want to just hit on a number of those things because I think they're all important. So uh, you know, first and foremost, um, the proposed septic system seems grossly inadequate. Given the size of what's being proposed, there could be upwards of ten thousand gallons per day. Um, uh, uh, being put into that, that septic system. Um, and the question that I would have is, is mass DEP going to require some sort of groundwater? And septic treatment plant uh for this uh development um as proposed? There's substantial grading across the site according to uh USGS quad maps. Those graded slopes and retaining walls and parking lots. Would all be subject to, in in my understanding, uh, both wetland setbacks and a butter setbacks. You know, I did not know before today uh that. Um, you know, they were proposing a fifteen or eighteen-foot wall on my property line. Um, in order to, to construct this building. So I would think that all of that grading would have to, and all those retaining walls and parking lots would all have to be subject to setbacks. The proposed plan uh would need extensive uh stormwater management, especially given the topography of of the, the, the site itself. And and they're transforming the entire site from a wooded site to a impervious site. Um, I'm not sure the, the stormwater management that they're proposing is, is even um. Uh, close to being adequate. And um. And then on top of that, the infiltration of that stormwater, um. You know, I'd be concerned as a director of butter down, down um. Downgrade from, from this site. That um it would raise the groundwater table and 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 uh potentially flooding into my basement. Uh, as a director butter and my neighbor's basements. On top of that, there's no fire truck access around the entire building. Um, the drive's dead end, um, you know. In in, and there's, there's no room for maneuvering a turnaround. Um, the dumpster areas look to be too small for a complex this size. There's no turnaround for the, the, the uh dumpster trucks that would come in to, to um remove those. Uh, the trash from those dump dumpsters. The site plan uh shows a four-story building. Um, without any elevator access um to the upper floors. I'm not sure that's in compliance with, you know, ADA uh design standards. Um, so all of those things, if you jump to the next page. Lead me to respectfully ask, um, you know, three key important questions. Does the proposed development fit the topography and the conditions of the land? Or is this, you know, grossly oversized for the parcel in question? Should um an independent review be conducted uh by a land engineer? Um, before mass housing considers this site for site approval? And should all of these concerns be raised by the planning board? Uh, to the select board before they provide their comments uh on this proposal to to mass housing? I think it's just important to put those three questions squarely on the table.
Thank you. So I think the um, the septic. Issues will be handled through the Board of Health and they're not. Um, none of those are waived under forty B, so they have to comply with those. And they will have to go before um CONCOM. And all state and federal wetlands protection are, they're not waived from. They are waived from the local, which is the twenty-foot. No touch, but the um. The CONCOM usually tries to get them to comply with that.
So the, the twenty-foot setbacks for butters. Can be waived by forty B?
So there's a, a local wetlands bylaw that requires um. A twenty-foot no-touch around all wetlands? So you can't do anything within twenty feet of the. So that. So that can be waived because it's a local bylaw. The state, it's, you can't do anything in the wetlands. And there's no, they don't, uh, require any buffer.
I, I just think it's important to look at, uh, the totality of all these concerns and problems with, with development of this site before, you know, this, this goes in front of mass housing per site approval. And, and I think it's, it's, the, the town needs to get ahead of this and, and, and raise the totality of these concerns, you know, to mass housing.
Sir, are, are you aware that this, the zoning board of appeals is actually the permitting authority in town?
Fully aware of that.
Okay.
But that comes next, from what I understand.
Right.
And.
We, we're going to submit our comments, but we're not the permitting authority.
Yes, but I, 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 these are germane issues to, you know, what the, the, the planning board has jurisdiction over, no?
So the, as Mimi was saying, we don't have jurisdiction over our conservation commission-related stuff, nor our Board of Health. We don't have jurisdiction. I mean, we, we do generally look at turnarounds, but, um, on construction projects like this, the, um, fire chief and police chief also are review these things for, to address your public safety-related concerns.
Stormwater management and regrading of the?
Normally, yes.
The land?
Right. I suppose it would be Conservation Commission for the stormwater stuff. So we do, we have somewhat limited, I feel like we've addressed the stuff that, you know, we have the purview to address in our comments. But I'll leave it to the rest of the board.
Ms. Houlihan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Appreciate this, and I appreciate the, the written notes. I, um, I would, I, I don't know if we saw the Conservation Commission. No, did they write an, an overall response? I missed it. Did they address some of these concerns in their response?
I don't, I don't know if they did anything on the amended.
Okay. Uh, um, one, I think it would behoove us to maybe share this presentation with them. I would also encourage you to do the same. But I do think we should probably, um, where the, the points on the, the septic and some of those things. I, I mean, I understand it's not necessarily in our purview, but it doesn't necessitate, necessitate not including them. So I, I mean, I think these are all valid. I think they should be incorporated, and I think we do carry weight as an elected board to kind of, um, echo the, the, the citizens' point. So I would be comfortable, um, looking at these eight points and, and pulling all eight in, um, and a, as long as we're in agreement with them, or we make, you know, instead of, um, like, the fire truck access is a big issue for me. I think a lot of those, those points. Um, and then I'd also just, and I think I've said this to, to all before, is that mass housing will approve it. It is really, um, there, that's what they do. And so it comes down to the zoning board of appeals and attendance there, and really kind of pushing for a zoning board and select board to kind of listen to what your appeals are. I'm always happy to talk offline with my experience in a separate forty B, um, and just how you might consider. Um, but I think your attendance and being able to appeal to the zoning board of appeals will go further than what you can do here because our purview is very limited.
Well, I understand that for sure, but that's down the road. So again, this is my attempt to try to get this, um, squarely on the table at this stage of the game. Because I think these are all important issues that need to be looked at by the town. So.
Is the, is the, uh, select board meeting before the September eighth date?
Select board, I believe, is meeting September fifth.
Okay. I would hope that this will be an agenda item on the select board meeting. Because you're, I, I would replicate this with the select board. From what I've seen, their, you know, comments have been very, very narrow on this agenda, on this item, so. I don't, I agree with, uh, Ms. Houlihan. I have no problem with incorporating this into our, uh, submission. But, uh, the select board will carry a lot of weight. And they've taken a very different tack, I feel.
So, so respectfully, what about, um, the ask of having an independent engineer, land engineer, take a look at this? Just given, you know, all the things that, that, you know, jump right off of the page on this one. Is that something that, uh, you guys would advocate, um, at, at, at this point in time? Advocate for at this point in time?
Well, so they, the mass housing wants comments by September eighth. So I don't think that there's time, and I, usually it's not, um, that deep a dive at this stage. It's just alerting mass housing that there are all these issues to keep in mind when you're looking at eligibility. But Ms. Houlihan was correct. This is kind of an administrative thing. They just usually approve everything, and then they kind of regurgitate everything back to the town. You should look at all the comments that, you know, were given to them. But when it gets to the Z B A pro, uh, process, they will have a, um, uh, independent consultant look at the, the plans.
And then we'll be back in front of the Z B A.
Thank you. And I agree with Ms. Houlihan that we should incorporate. So the elevator, we already have in our letter, but the others we, um, will add in. And we did uh, write in our letter all the legal questions about all the previous permits and.
Okay. Except for elevator.
Can I just, Mr. Palmer? Can you send this? Um, I think, is this in PowerPoint? Yeah, it's PowerPoint. I can copy and paste.
It's a PDF.
PDF. Can you send it in PowerPoint? Or just that one slide? So it's an easier copy and paste?
Yes.
Thanks.
Will you really? Um, I, I was prepared to do it if you don't have the, the.
Did you quote your PowerPoint? Can I ask one follow-up, Karina? Did we know in the packet that went originally to mass housing before the extension? Did the police and fire or public safety offer any form of comment at all? Debbie and I had the same question on that.
Not that I'm aware, but I didn't see all the documentation. I just saw the select board's letter with, um, the, um, the, um, steward committee. What's the committee? There was a committee that attached.
Stewardship.
Stewardship. I'm sorry. The steward.
And that was one twenty.
And that was one twenty, right? The, I don't believe the select would have prepared a comment letter yet because they knew the extended deadline. So they submitted on one twenty, but I think they waited, um, just because they knew the revision was coming.
Although they did vote to send a letter on two fifty at a public meeting.
Okay.
And, but didn't do it.
Copy of that letter.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if it's at this point in the process that it would make sense to me that our public safety is, is commenting on what's kind of before us that we're all commenting on, but I just, I'm not quite sure what the process would be on that. If it's now or actually when it comes back to the town.
I'd like just to add, because it's pointed out that it's potentially, there's not enough access. I think it would be a nice thing to bring it to the, uh, fire chief's attention to see if he could write a letter with his opinion.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, so one more thing, even the eighth point here around the, um, you know, no elevator access, um, no elevators proposed in, in the site plan. Whose responsibility is it to bring something like that forward?
Well, that, so that would be, um, at this point, you mean?
At this point. I mean, it, it just seems like a gross admission.
Well, we did, we put, that is in our letter.
Oh, that is in your.
Yes, yeah. And we were going to incorporate the other ones. I said not that one because it was, we already have it in the letter.
So the architect or the engineer who does the development is responsible for signing off on the plans, saying that they meet ADA. The building commissioner in, uh, looking at plans when decides to issue a permit, also will look at, at that issue. So that's not a planning level thing. That's, that's when that happens.
And thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any hands raised. Marguerite, do you know if this is on the select board's agenda for the fifth? Okay. So we're going to send, uh, we're going to amend our letter and resend it with the comments that were brought up.
Is it, how can we do this outside of public meeting? Can we circulate the draft? Or are we just basically saying tonight, we're good?
Well, what we did last time is, um, the letter got drafted. And then I reviewed it with either Marty or Mimi.
Okay.
Singularly, who have, being present, um, would opine on it. And then I sent it to all the planning board members once the final draft was there in case you had any final comments.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
That's all. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the planner's report.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Before we move on, we, we sent our comments and everybody else commented on one twenty. Right? Did the proponent, so the proponent clearly had a response to public comment, our comments, et cetera, on two fifty. Did they have no comment on any of the, or any response to the stuff that was provided? Did they receive everything on, on one twenty?
Yes, uh, uh, yes.
I just thought it was interesting that they took all of the stuff that was submitted and done on two fifty into consideration, then generated new plans, but had no response on one twenty. Am I getting that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Finish your report. Just a few things here. So we, um, select board meeting, I guess Al Hamilton on the select board had sent an, um, an email out, um, to planning board and other committees. Um, I have asked him since to copy me on those so that I can, uh, in case anybody misses something, I can follow up. To discuss Twenty One Highland, uh, street, um, future plans on their select board, uh, September fifth meeting. Um, it was followed by an email, um, from Andrew Dennington, Chair of the Select Board, um, a quick clarification on that the upcoming discussion, uh, was going to be very preliminary in that they weren't anticipating a bunch of posted meetings from other committees. So I just wanted to make sure, does the planning board want me to post a, an agenda for that select board meeting? Just in case.
So I just want to mention, I was on the Twenty One Highland, uh, working group subcommittee, and we did present uh, detailed information and a full review of the report as well as the written report to the select board. So they're not flying blind. They have, they have the Twenty One Island committees findings, and they've been briefed on it. So I'm not, and, and furthermore, there was a follow-up email from Mr. Dennington that that was going to be at the end of the agenda that evening.
Yeah.
I, I think that at this point, I personally have nothing to add to that discussion for now.
Yeah, um, I was just going to concur, concur with Mr. Stein is it was during a plea, uh, tree, tree meeting, uh, joint hearing, with a very extensive review when, um, Bis, Bischetteck, uh, Mr. Bischetteck?
Biscical.
Biscical, um, reviewed Twenty One Highland. So that was a very in-depth, um, discussion. So I would agree. I don't have anything to comment on.
I wish, I had a little more detail about what the discussion's going to be about, but the only thing I thought about on Twenty One Highland is, um, it's a potential property, right, for part of the MBTA community? And I just feel it's premature to make any kind of decision, I guess, without knowing whether or not, uh, you know, with all due respect to the Jesse and, um, others that spent the time and, and made a recommendation, I, um, that's very good information for this board to have also, um, as we kind of enter into this next phase and talk about MBTA communities. So my only ask was, gee, I hope that they don't make any decision on that property until we hear from uh, the public on whether or not that's viable property as part of MBTA.
It was, and that was a big part of our presentation that evening. So we agree with you.
I have nothing further to add other than, um, you know, the email, the last email that was sent out saying that there's really no substantive conversation taking place. It's just sorry, general for them. So I'm fine as well with not posting.
Okay, I'm in agreement, and I won't be here, so. But I, I would, um, ask the select board, if anyone's listening, that, um, as this moves forward in discussion on Twenty One Highland, that you have a more inclusive conversation. This is one of the two properties in Southborough that's on the National Register of Historic Properties, and I noticed that the historical commission was not on this email that was sent out. There's significant, um, there's a park and open space in the front. The open space commission wasn't included. The recreation commission and Southborough Youth and Family that have offices in that building, they weren't included. So I think although, um, the working group did a great job and did a great presentation, there's still other entities that, um, should comment on that.
Okay, so no agenda of planning what on September fifth at the select board. The town website is now a, um, dot gov. So if you have any favorites or anything that you save, I think it'll temporarily link you to there, but then you just have to update your just so you know. And, um, emails, I suppose, will be coming soon too, instead of, um, what's it, dot com is going to go to dot gov.
And thank you, Mr. Lit, for that. I know you've been advocating for that for a while.
I forwarded you an email from Ryan Donovan, who is, um, has a survey out there for feedback and input on the Southborough Library Building and, um, in a construction aspect. And then also they're having a, um, uh, building, library building open forum on August thirty-first at seven PM and Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at seven PM. Which the second meeting, yeah. Which we have a meeting on. And, um, there's a flyer out that represents that in that email, if anybody wants to see it. Sorry about that. Um, and lastly, I think, um, I have been in contact very preliminarily with Mass Autobahn about the deed research database update. So, um, as soon as I get back to them and see, uh, if, I think they're interested. So depending on what the scope is, um, I could be able to take the next step over the next couple of months. But I'll keep you posted on that, and that, I mentioned that because that's ARPA funds that we'll be using. And I'm still trying to get to the zoning map. Got one. We've got one final step. It's on the horizon and then it'll, you know, we'll go through the process that the planning board accepts it and certifies and then goes to town clerk and then gets recorded. We're very close. It's just a matter of being able to look at all the borders to make sure they're where they're supposed to be. And that's all I have. And we have two sets of minutes?
Mr. Stein?
Uh, make a motion that the planning board accept the July 24th minutes as written.
Second? I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashir, yes?
Like, to make a motion that the planning board accept the August 14th meeting minutes as written.
Second? I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashir abstain.
Oh, abstain. Hold on. I wrote a five there. Four, yes.
Next meeting, September 18th. October 2nd in two public forums on MBTA communities, September 21st and September 27th.
Yeah, we should add that on. And just so you know, I left you a packet for the next meeting that includes the St. Mark's parking lot at St. Mark's Street and then also 14 Main Street, a first floor change of use to medical offices, which requires a special permit in the downtown district. So that'll be a minor site plan and a special permit. I'm also anticipating 28 Turnpike, which is a change of use also on the first floor from retail to office space. It's currently tempting interiors, something like that. And so that'll be coming as a minor site plan too, I anticipate for the 18th.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stein.
I just feel like I have to comment on our chair and our town planner doing an excellent job and the rest of the board as well. Like, this is going very well. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashir, yes.
Are you going to come behind us until midnight?
No.
And I'm going to just stop the recording now?